Don't apply to your board. I mean, the biggest one, I think, is just approving meeting notices. And I've talked to Caitlin about that. Those have to be reviewed and approved much more timely.
So we're going to-
For all boards?
For every single board. And so this week, we're going to be sending out a notice to every single board and committee. I sent it out to the department heads last week. And I'm going to be sending that out to chairman from all the boards and committees to let them know, hey, these changes are effective now, and you need to approve your minutes more timely.
Do the minutes have to be posted? You know, on- because I know some committees- we have our minutes on the computer-
Right.
And some committees don't, but do we- does this mandate that all meeting minutes be posted?
The open meeting law does not, but the change in the public records law last fall, it's recommended that any board or committee that has the ability to post should post their meeting minutes. Most of ours are pretty good, you know, especially the more high-profile committees. You're on, I know Planning's on, you know. So any board or committee that has the ability to do that should be doing that. We're working on a new website. It's probably going to be easier to post these things, so we're working in that direction.
So the committees or the boards would be posting their own minutes? They don't have to give it to somebody else to post? Because isn't it what was going on there?
Right. Yeah, they will have- it'll be easy for them to post the information, but they still have to file it directly with Tom Clark.
Right. Something like the selectmen keep their own minutes in their office. We don't have those, but they post them to the website. We have certain boards and committees. You know, each municipality handles a little differently. A lot of it's space availability. Where can they hold all the minutes? But with the public records law, they really, really want everything you could put on the website that isn't supposed to be kept private should go on the website. So- and more and more, you know, we're getting there. It's a process, and we're getting- you know, we've come a long way over the last few years ago.
Any other questions?
No official action required at this point, if that's the case.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thanks for coming out. Thank you.
All right.
Okay, 7:15. We'll do the 7:10 bill, solar ray systems.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The document- you have some documents in your file that require your signature. I also need a couple motions read into the record, and they have been provided to you, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Right, so Doc, I really request that you would read those approvals into the record. They've been prepared by town council. And the main difference here is that during the solar process, you may recall that there was a company called Sun Edison who actually took over the project initially, and then they actually went bankrupt, unfortunately. But a company called NIG took over that project. So we have to change, officially change, the project from NIG, from Sun Edison to NIG, and the documents have to reflect that. So there were two motions that- one for the landfill project and the one for the Elm Street project. So that is the action that has been requested.
Bill, the fact that Sun Edison, the original company, went out of business, does that- does that maybe foreshadow some problems with, you know, in the industry?
Well, actually, NIG is actually a very healthy business. They're financially, they're very sound, because they're a multifaceted business. Sun Edison wasn't as diversified, and they frankly had some bad- they made some bad investments along the way. But NIG is actually very healthy. So I don't anticipate that to be an issue with this company. A much bigger company.
So NRG assumed all the contracts from-
Not all the contracts. Actually, it went into like a- was a clearinghouse for-
No, I mean for the town of Foxborough.
For the town of Foxborough, yes. They took both projects.
All the contracts that we had executed with Sun Edison, NRG assumed all those?
Correct. Yes, they did. So town council was actually asked us to correct the record, to clear up the record.
Okay. Do these one at a time?
Move to ratify and confirm the site lease agreement dated August 30th, 2017, entered by the town with NRG DG Foxborough Elm LLC for the lease of approximately 8,832 acres of town-owned land located off of Elm Street in Foxborough, Mass. As authorized by vote under Article 21 at the annual town meeting held on May 13th, 2014.
Second.
Under discussion, it's 8.8032 acres.
Oh, I apologize. I thought that was a comma. Should I read it again?
Yeah.
Okay. That would be the whole size of the town, wouldn't it? Let's try this again. Move to ratify and confirm the site lease agreement dated August 30th, 2017, entered by the town of Foxborough with NRG DG Foxborough Elm LLC for the lease of approximately 8.8032 acres of town-owned land located off of Elm Street in Foxborough, Mass. As authorized by vote under Article 21 at the annual town meeting held on May 13th, 2014.
Second.
Motion made. Second. Any further discussion?
Under discussion, when this was approved at town meeting, did it then come to the board to approve it?
It did, yeah.
All right, so we don't have to do anything at town meeting where this was-
No, no, this was already done.
Okay.
The purpose of the town meeting action was to authorize the use of the land for a solar ray project.
Okay.
So-
All right.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All's in favor?
Right.
Aye.
Move to ratify and confirm the general terms and conditions of solar power and services agreement dated March 28th, 2014, and the amended and restated solar power and services agreement special conditions dated November 16th, 2015, all entered by the town with Sun E. Mass. DGI LLC as successor to Sun Edison Organization One LLC, and as amended by that certain amendment and waiver agreement dated October 3rd, 2016 regarding the install- installation and operation of solar photovoltaic-
Photovoltaic.
Photovoltaic system on the Elm Street property.
Second.
Motion made. Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All's in favor?
Aye.
Move to ratify and confirm all such other documents, contracts, instruments, and certificates as may be necessary in connection with each of the agreements ratified and confirmed by the foregoing votes, and that the signature of the Foxborough Town Manager to execute and deliver the agreements, and all such other documents, contracts, instruments, and certificates are hereby ratified and confirmed.
Second.
Motion made. Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All's in favor?
Aye.
So you now have the ones for the landfill.
Okay. Move to ratify and confirm the site license agreement dated March 28th, 2014, entered into by the town with the NRG DG Foxborough Landfill LLC as successor in interest to Sun Edison Organization One LLC for the license of approximately 25.039 acres of town-owned property located on East Belcher Road in Foxborough, Mass. As authorized by vote under Article 21 at the annual town meeting held on May 13th, 2014.
Second.
Motion made. Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All's in favor?
Aye.
Move to ratify and confirm the general terms and conditions of solar power and service agreement and the solar power and services agreement special conditions, each dated March 28th, 2014, and the amended and restated solar power and services agreement special conditions dated October 3rd, 2016, all entered by the town with NRG DG Foxborough Landfill LLC as successor to Sun Edison Organization One LLC, and as amended by the certain agreement and waiver agreement dated October 3rd- I'm sorry, by the certain amendment and waiver agreement dated October 3rd, 2016, and that certain waiver and extension agreement dated June 28th, 2017 regarding the installation and operation of solo- solar photovoltaic system on the East Belcher Road property.
Second.
Motion made. Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All's in favor?
Aye.
Move to ratify and confirm all such other documents, contracts, instruments, and certificates as may be necessary in connection with each of the agreements ratified and confirmed by the foregoing votes, and that the signature of the Foxborough Town Manager to execute and deliver the agreements, and all such other documents, contracts, instruments, and certificates is hereby ratified and confirmed.
Second.
Motion made. Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All's in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay. So 7:15, almost 7:25. Doc, will you open the public hearing? GMRI Inc., DBA, The Olive Garden Restaurant? Yeah, just pulling it up.
The Board of Selectmen acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to Mass. General Law Chapter 138 will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, October 3rd, 2017, beginning at 7:15 p.m. in the Foxborough High School Media Center, 120 South Street, on the change of manager for the annual all-alcohol restaurant license for GMRI Inc., DBA, The Olive Garden Restaurant, 392 Patriot Place. All interested parties are welcome to attend.
Welcome.
Hi.
Are you Rita?
No, my name is Jade Ross. I'm the general manager.
Okay.
Yes, the new general manager.
The new general manager. Okay. And you're taking over for who?
For Stephanie Mayher.
Okay. How long have you worked at The Olive Garden?
I work at The Olive Garden for about nine and a half years now, but I work at many Olive Gardens.
Okay.
I just got promoted to the one in Foxborough.
Okay. Were you the- were you the manager in Methuen?
Yes.
In Tinsborough?
Yes.
So you got a promotion to Foxborough?
Yes.
Good. Okay. I went through the application. I didn't see any issues or red flags. Any members of the board have any-
No.
No.
Pretty straightforward.
Standard.
Okay. Being this is a public hearing, if there's anybody in the audience that has any questions or concerns relative to this matter, please feel free to step forward. Seeing none.
Did you want to do the Fox? What's that? Your Fox case?
No, they're already member.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, just one question. So how many hours a week do you- are you going to plan to be at the store?
I usually work 50 hours a week.
50 hours a week?
Mm-hmm.
And when you're not going to be in charge, who is the person going to be in charge?
I do have three other managers as well. My sales culinary and my service manager. They've been there a lot longer than I have. Richard, Carrie, and Shelley. Richard's been there for over 15 years, and we have Carrie, who's been there for two years, and Shelley, who just got promoted to Foxborough as a sales manager.
And all of them have proper sort of safe trading?
Yes, they do.
Okay.
One other question. You're giving up being a manager at those other locations?
I'm sorry?
You're giving up being a manager at those other locations. Foxborough's going to be your only location?
As of right now, unless they move me to another restaurant. But at the other restaurant, I was just like restaurant manager, but this one, I'm a general manager.
Okay. Other questions?
And your name is Rita?
My name is Jade Ross.
Oh, yours is Jade Ross. Okay, Rita was the one you're replacing.
Yes.
Okay.
Excuse me.
All right.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made. Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All's in favor?
Aye.
Move to-
Thank you.
Wait.
No, no, no.
Not so fast.
Sorry.
Move to approve Jade Ross as the GMRI Inc., DBA, Olive Garden Restaurant, new general manager.
Second.
Motion made. Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All's in favor?
Aye.
Now you're free to go.
There you go.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Okay.
Back on schedule. 7:25. Jack Offutt, discuss town message board.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I will- I was going to try to introduce the issue, Mr. Chairman, if that's okay, if you don't mind. Jack, I just wanted to offer just some introduction to this discussion. The- for a number of- over months now, and actually for a number of years, people have commented to me that, you know, we have- we've had the sign board in the center of town, which we know has been a topic of discussion in previous years as well. And while none of us are here to try and create controversy, I know that any time you make a change on anything, it creates some level of controversy. However, the- we're dealing with a practical issue right now, and that is the fact that, contrary to what's been said on social media, which is absolutely incorrect, we do not have a person that can change that sign. People do not come forward to ask us to do that. If they have, we certainly would let them do it. We do not have a person that can do that. So we have a practical problem in the sense that the sign itself- we used to have senior work-off candidates do it, and they did a great job. And in fact, it got to the point where we had nobody to change it, and as a result, we had to then just, you know, do the best we could with what we had to try and get the thing done. We all wanted- we all want to support the effort. However, the time has come when it makes sense for us to look at options. And so I had reached out to Jack, because I know Jack had worked on this issue a number of years ago, and expressed concerns about it, and asked him if there was- if there were a way we could look at different options to try and look at this particular situation, and to see if there's other ways in which we could do it or address it in a different way. I do not have a solution, a firm solution in the other direction. Tonight was supposed to be a discussion, and that's it. And then to see if the discussion would take us in any kind of a direction. So there is no recommendation being made here tonight, contrary to what's been said in below from social media, which is actually offensive in many ways, because that was never the point of this discussion tonight. The point was to have, first, a presentation about ideas, and a presentation of the concerns that we have, so that we can actually just deal with this in a constructive way and not in an offensive way, in any way, shape, or form. So I think that's the gist of the discussion tonight, and I appreciate Jack being here, because Jack has probably the most history of the entire situation. I know there's a lot of history that goes back on this, because I know the Lions Club has been dealt with this, has dealt with this for many years as well, and I want to respect the work that they put into this as well. So again, this is a discussion point only, and to talk about it in an open session so that people can have the opportunity to have to provide their input. That's just the background for this item tonight. Thank you.
Jack, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. I think it is important, not only the issue that has to be discussed, but how it came about. Now, I was in receipt of a message from the town manager asking me to meet with him on Friday, July 21, to discuss some historical matters. The opening statement from the town manager at that meeting was that the message boards on the common had to be digitized. The reason that it was explained to me was cost. The cost of changing the messages every week. I- we had pointed out in the initial go-around with Mr. Pecos that there was a way out of the cost problem, and that was to use the senior citizens working on the tax program. And that is what the town did. But what I was told at that meeting is that the senior citizens are only allowed a certain number of hours per year, and it wasn't enough to get them through the whole year. So another whole set would have to be trained, and the town wanted to get out from under that cost. Now, it was just a total shock that this whole subject was being raised again after we went through with the former town manager, who attempted the very same cost-saving effort. I responded that if the boards were digitized, they could not be on the common, per an agreement reached a few years ago. Mr. Keegan responded that it didn't matter where the message boards were, as long as they were digitized. Sensing the challenge of going through this process again, I stressed that we could not repeat the mistakes of the past earlier attempts to digitize, and this time, the issue should be discussed in appearance before the Board of Selectmen, preceded by publication, awareness of the issue in the newspaper, and the public would be entitled to participation throughout the process. I also argued strongly that it had to be conducted in a manner that would recognize the commitments made by the Lions Club in erecting and maintaining the boards. But seeking the broadest possible awareness on the message board mandate and encouraging participation by the public, I also asked that no decisions would be made the night of the presentation before the Selectmen. That would come at a later date. Each of these three conditions were approved. But since Mr. Keegan did not have knowledge of what we had gone through earlier, I provided background on the origin of the controversial effort. In the original agreement, the Lions Club would build and maintain the message board, and the town itself would manage requests or listing and change the messages each week. The plan worked well, and went smoothly for many years. But when submitting a routine request for permission to have workers on the common to do their maintenance one particular year, former town manager Pecos insisted that they withdraw their request for routine maintenance, and instead submit a petition to digitize the message boards. Many members of the public were incensed by the proposal and highly critical of the Lions Club. But each person who shared their remarks with me was contacted with an explanation that the Lions were forced by the town manager to make that request. Every one of them that I contacted were pleased to learn that it was not the Lions Club that originated the idea. When the effort to digitize crashed and burned, the news went out again, saying the Lions Club had withdrawn their petition. The Lions Club had been thrown under the bus with statements that portrayed them as the originator of the entire project. Now, Mr. Keegan agreed with discussing the matter at a public session and inviting input from the public. I cautioned him that there would be an additional component to the discussion, as many questions had been raised about public safety, as concerns over distracted driving had become the major issue of the past years. It was suggested that I identify issues involved with the mandate to digitize, to seek out basic information, pros and cons, and to vet them for presentation at the public session. It was a very, very large request. My first effort was to immediately notify the Lions Club and the Foxborough Historical Commission that another effort was underway to digitize the message boards. Tom Barry, president of the Lions Club, was quite surprised by the mandate from the town manager. He said members had expressed concern during the earlier discussion, that if the message boards were removed to other locations around town, the Lions Club would be expected to pay for them. I expressed my doubt about that, as the town would be the responsible party for forcing the move. Concerned with what was happening, he said the Lions had a meeting coming up in September, and asked if I would attend. I would have welcomed the opportunity, but at that particular time, I responded that I could not make a commitment to something that far ahead, as I had nothing on which to base a presentation this early. I assured him that there would be a public hearing scheduled, but my immediate need was to speak with him and a couple of the representatives of the club. My outreach to the Historical Commission was to announce the mandate and say that there would be a public meeting in October. Members had discussed possible locations off the common during the earlier effort, and were very, very familiar with the need to find town-owned property that would be in a favorable location. So I again stated to them that another element had been added, and that was public safety. My next outreach was to Chief of Police Bill Baker, who quickly responded to my request for discussion on the potential for driver distraction associated with the current message boards and the proposed message boards. Expressing an unscientific opinion, he noted the existing traffic pattern around the common, just in general, was a challenge in itself with the rotary design, the multiple intersecting streets, and pedestrian crosswalks. He stated his belief that signs and any other activity on the common can add to the potential for driver distraction. Elevating the signs would, in his opinion, increase the potential for dress- distraction, and the possibility is definitely a subject of public safety. He provided copies of national and international surveys discussing the difference between standard signs and digital signs. Every one of those studies indicated a greater risk with digital signs, except one particular study that said there was no difference between the two. That particular study was sponsored by an outdoor advertising agency, so we didn't put too much credence on that. Now, Chief Baker suggested there were alternatives to signage on the common. He might be asking if other digital boards in town could carry some of the weight, some of the important messages. Local cable was suggested for listings, the possibility of a town website to which residents could subscribe. Seeking a sense of alternatives to digital boards and possible compromises, I reached out to the Lions and the Historical Commission for a joint meeting. An agreement was reached, and a date was set. Unfortunately, it did not materialize, and the Lions decided that they would wait for this public meeting. And unfortunately, that kind of broke down communications, and I didn't get another shot at going to their September meeting. But it was at that meeting that the Foxborough Lions Club celebrated 86 years of service to the community, which was noted for its annual screening of clinics, and later expanding to hearing tests, a growing list of projects benefiting the community, and they had great reason to celebrate. Mike John's Veteran Service Officer was contacted to be made aware of the mandate on the digital boards, and was assured that the earlier agreement reached during discussion on digital boards to- would never be set into the area at the foot of the common in which we honor our veterans with monuments from World War I up through all conflicts for which end dates had been established. The discussion takes place today as a new memorial is about to be unveiled, honoring those who have served post-911. And he reached out to the Legion and the VFW to assure them that the memorials would be safe. We had another meeting scheduled. I had met a total of three times with the town manager, and Dave Feldman joined us for that particular meeting. I- he needed an update, to be briefed on the proposal. He was not aware of it. So I had the privilege of walking him through, starting with that initial meeting with the town manager, brought him up through- town manager, brought him up through notification to Lions and Historical, and the input from Chief Baker, and others, and a general summary of where we stood. Now, Dave is experienced with digital signage in the business world, so we hit the ground running, suggestions of his own, calling attention to new means of communication developed over the years and additional ways to meet the public. He was in agreement with a proposal of locations for digital boards located throughout town, which had been discussed earlier. He also expressed a public safety concern. But moving the message boards from the common did not necessarily mean tearing down the entire structure. He suggested that the center portion could be removed, and the brick pillars on each side could remain in place with the signs stretching between the two. So all of this was this wide-ranging, long-going effort, in which I also spoke to people in clubs that use the message boards all the time, the different times and things that the message boards had helped promote. Certainly, anyone planning a public event, a fundraising event, one of the first things you would do is go and reserve your time on the message board. But it all came down to the basic issue, that no matter what we discussed with whom, public safety was foremost. Now, we have to realize that the message boards on the common right now are not near an intersection. They are in an intersection. You're driving your vehicle around the common. When you get close enough to read a message board, the crosswalks are merely seconds That quickly, you would be into a crosswalk. Now, this puts the public at great risk. I think it puts the drivers at risk, great risk. Nobody certainly wants to run over somebody in a crosswalk. So obviously, there are people who would have other ideas. There are many, many possibilities of alternatives that have been raised. But with the conclusions of the study on public safety, and with the concurrence of Chief Baker, the boards themselves in their present form are a distraction. Illuminating those would be a much larger, more dangerous distraction. And I think that all of these things, it was such a great effort from the Lions Club to identify a community project and come forward and do this. And that common has been the scene of many, many marvelous efforts of bringing people together for many, many causes. But we go to the common for our celebrations of greatest joy. We also go there at times of deepest sorrow, as we have recently. But at no time can we have distractions that are going to take away from that. And even as we speak right here tonight, there is a plan for three, three-story buildings, commercial on the bottom, residential on top, within one block of the common, on South and School and Centennial Street. That will be a major increase in foot traffic and vehicular traffic. We also have a very, very good effort going on right now to make Foxborough Center more This also would increase pedestrian traffic and raise our risk. We, with our sense of community over the years, have reached out and embraced fellow residents in every possible way to improve this community, improve life in the community for them. I think that same sense of community would force us to put message boards of any type into the category of possible distracted driving. I have much more data, but I would hope that we're going to be able to pick up on this and move forward. However, I have talked to other public officials and people who have worked on community efforts for a very, very long time. But what I also realize now is when Foxborough last changed its signs bylaws, there were four districts created. District Three, the circumference of 1,000 feet around the common, prohibits electrical And there is no opportunity for abatements or adjustments. The only way that can be changed is by changing the law itself. And yet, here we are, going through this. And I think that...
Chairman, I have to respond to this. I'm just outraged by this. First of all, let me just say, the bylaw doesn't allow you to put electronic signs on the common. That's the point, that's the first point, and you updated everybody, Jack, but you didn't update me. And I asked you for help on this issue. So I think we could have had this discussion, and we could have avoided all this discussion that you just gave. It's not allowed, so you can't allow it on the common.
From day one, the agreement was to bring it before this meeting.
The idea was to look for alternative ways to address the issue. That was the request I made to you. It wasn't just to put digital signboards on the common. I can tell you that was an alternative, that was one option, but it's not the only option available. And I said I wanted to look at other options as well.
Your first...
I was at the same meeting with the chairman when that was discussed.
If you recall, Dave, I said the first statement was, "They will be digitized."
Right. And I think we collectively agreed that the common is not a place for a digital signage board because of public safety and to maintain the integrity of the common. So I think we quickly got off of that, and then we started looking at alternatives.
Many other, there's all kinds of possibilities.
It was clearly not a mandate. I can tell you that. That was never discussed. And I never directed anybody to say that was the case. We talked about, I wanted to see what the options were. Digitizing those boards is an option. It's not the only option, and we know that. In fact, the issue of digital boards around town makes a lot of sense. The issue is that the current board is difficult to change because it has to be done manually. And the fact is, it doesn't even show up at night. And the fact is, is that most people today use social media and websites to gain the information about the town. So the question is, is there another way to address this issue in a way that makes sense for the town? That's all. That's all I was looking to find out, because the current way is problematic because there's a practical issue of actually changing the sign. That was the issue.
Can I also comment on that? We've sought now for three years, people from the senior tax work-off program to change the sign. We had one success, we've had two successful groups of people. We no longer have anybody interested in doing it. We can't mandate our public works people to do it. It's not in their job descriptions, nor is it in the interest of public safety for them to spend man-hours changing the sign. It's a two-person job. We have people injured doing the job. The sign is a very, very heavy springboard.
It's spring-loaded.
And we've sent our own employees up there, male and female, and it's very, very difficult. The last time the sign was broken, I think, when somebody crashed into it, was when we started this discussion. Do we repair it? How do we repair it? And it went, you know, the actual physical safety of changing the sign is our biggest problem. It's not digitizing. And I don't believe that there's ever been a mandate to that. Here's a problem with social media and technology. Do we need, is this a good use of resources? We don't have a person assigned to it. We had someone apply just two weeks ago and then not show up for the interview, so we are at a loss. We're going to either have a sign that's not updated, or just a WWW visit us on, visit the town website. That's, right now, is pretty much where we're at. It's not anything personal or, you know, trying to be...
So based on our last meeting, is how we got here today. We want to have a discussion. We want to bring the community involved. At no point in our discussions are the Lions going to be financially liable for anything that we do going forward. I mean, that's just asinine. So that's off the table. We appreciate what the Lions have done.
Yes. I never expected they would.
Right. But we also need to recognize that times are changing, the traffic around the common has increased many, many times over since the original placement of the sign. Technology is changing. Is there a better way to get the information out to the public? And it doesn't, like we discussed, the common's not the right place for it. There's just too much going on there. So I think how we got here, there's a little differing of opinions how we got to this point right here. But now that we're here, let's work together, let's work collectively, and find out what's the best location. If we go digital, what's the best location? Is there another means?
Right. Or are there other ways to communicate electronically? We went through all those.
Right. I think that's the way it should go forward. We're in no position to make a vote tonight, nor was anybody prepared to bring a motion for a vote tonight.
It was specifically agreed that we would not make a decision tonight.
And just to be clear for the record, there's no recommendation before the board tonight. There was nothing ever reduced to writing, because it wasn't my recommendation to make here. It was a discussion only, and that's the reason why we're here tonight. So I'm sure there are others that want to weigh in on this topic, so...
How many groups do you have currently, like, wanting to put stuff up on the message?
It varies from week to week.
Right now, right this second, like, do we now?
We have a pile right now, don't we?
We haven't been accepting any, we've kind of been accepting some, just saying, we don't know what to do in the future, so we'll let you know after.
Well, having been somebody who has used that board for 20-plus years through Cub Scouts, Boy Scouts, McGinty Family Fund Day, going forward, I will put, the message is up on those. So get me the letters and get me...
The problem is, we don't have anybody to do it right now. It's physically, you know, Kate and I couldn't do it.
No, I will put, I am going to physically go up there every Sunday and change them out, so can you...
We need two people.
You need two people to do it.
I am married...
Right now, the town...
No, but I mean, I've used those, like I said, for everything I've done with this community. Those have a special spot in my heart, so...
Well, Chris, I mean, in all fairness to you, and I appreciate you stepping forward to do that, but it shouldn't just be left to you. I mean, if there are other people, if there are other people that want to step forward to do it, then fine. I welcome the opportunity to work with them.
I'll be the keeper of putting that up, and anybody that wants to can reach out to me.
Right now, the town is not honoring its commitment. It's part of this deal. They're not accepting new ones. The boards are empty. The Lions Club never reneged on their commitment to build and maintain.
Why not reneging?
The town is not honoring its commitment to manage the applications and change the message.
Well, I guess the question is, what is that commitment? Because I've never seen it. But I mean, but number one is the fact, you know, knowing that this is the issue at this point in time, is this the best way to go forward? I mean, at the end of the day, Chris, I mean, there's going to be times you're not going to be around.
I'll make sure they get up there.
And, you know, but I think it's, the issue is, is that the only way to deal with this, I mean, practically speaking?
I also have to look into the liability, that if someone gets hurt doing it.
Right.
I'm meeting with our insurance company next week. I don't know if there's going to have to be some sort of a waiver signed.
I won't get hurt.
No, 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 I just mean that if you get a...
If somebody else does it with you. See, we do that with people that do it.
So that's an option. Chris will, you know, take charge of that and solicit volunteers.
Yeah, I mean, at least while this whole discussion goes on.
Fair enough, yeah. I mean, I think that's a good temporary solution.
As long as I can afford to live in this town.
One of the objections to the present board was that it's not lit at night.
Correct.
Okay, is there a way that, there is electricity on the common. I know there's electricity on the common. Is there a way to, you know, run some lights to be illuminating the board at night?
Certainly possible.
Do solar.
Solar would be easier.
Well, I think, I think if we're going to start lighting signs on the common, I think we got to be careful with public safety. But, I mean, we need to bring Chief Baker in and have a further discussion. Linda, you've been waiting, and I'm sure you have some comments.
Yeah, Linda Walsh, A. Pond Ave., lived here forever. I remember making signs, they were four-foot by whatever, and we'd put them up underneath the old Foxborough sign. And then the Lions came in and made them beautiful, and they remain beautiful. I've been going through this for the past couple of years, but I didn't know to the extent that you had a problem. I heard several times that we had seniors that were willing to do it. You know, then I was told, well, there isn't enough room on the board for you, Linda. I had put it in two months ahead, but then the library got up there, and something at the school, and something else. So, you know, us little J.C.s were out of the picture for one of our main events. But I'm sure that we could help volunteer to do that. And I know that you pay attention to Facebook, and if you go back, some of those posts that you were reading, there was at least a dozen people that said, "Wait a minute, we'll go up and help." So I don't know if you want to repost on that for them to come up and volunteer to help.
I think getting the help is great. I think that's certainly one way to deal with that issue.
But you're saying that you didn't, you know, you don't have any help.
But the question is, is that a practical way to continue to deal with this issue? Is all I'm asking.
So I think, if you're going to put practical against what we are used to in this town, and what the majority of the people honestly built, you know, that's all I'm asking, is that it's a way of life here in this little town, and we have such little things left of the character of our town, I think those signs are part of it. And just like, I'm sorry, but just like Chris, it's part of my heart, and I'll bet you, if you ask a lot of us townies, you know, we do look at those signs. And we don't look at those signs when I'm driving around the common, you know, and coming into it. When I'm stopped, when I need to stop, that's when I look at that sign. And when I'm coming up Main Street, I probably don't look at it as much as I do the one when I'm coming up Central, and I'm stopped. I don't look at it while I'm going by. And I don't think I ought to. And I don't really think that, we had the discussion about lighting it before, and we said it's a distraction more at nighttime. The things that are happening, they're happening mostly, you're going shopping during the day, that's when you see the sign. It's not, you know, at nighttime that you're looking to find out what's happening tomorrow, you know, on the sign at night. So I just want you to know that I'm speaking for myself, as well as I believe the J.C.s would be willing to help, and if the Lions are willing to keep the signs there, we're willing to help, so we'll be involved with any discussions.
The signs aren't going anywhere. The signs are staying. I don't think anybody has any intention of removing...
Well, if it's not practical, then...
Well, I'm looking for a solution here, folks. And so, and my responsibility is to bring an issue forward when it's not being addressed. And the last thing people want to see is the signs remaining empty. And we've made efforts, we had senior work-off candidates, who were not being paid, by the way, so it wasn't an issue of cost.
Okay.
The issue was that they could only work for so long, and then they worked off their hours, so they couldn't do it anymore.
Yep. And I think if you just raise the flag, raise the flag that you need help, people will help. I think if you raise the flag, people will help. That's all I'm saying. It usually happens. If you, you know, tonight you're having this discussion, and I think tomorrow... I think tomorrow you're gonna be bombarded by people that say they have.
I apologize for, for the fact that I, that I got a little bit upset about this, because that was not the mission here. The mission was, I have a problem, I need to fix it, I'm trying to look for ways to address it, is there a different way to address this than we've currently been doing it? That was it. Now, the fact, the fact, digital was an option, absolutely, because it was discussed many years ago.
Yeah.
And, and people didn't like it.
Right.
Okay, so it was raised back in two thousand, I don't know, two thousand twelve, I guess, was when it first came up.
Yeah, it was.
Twelve, thirteen, thirteen, around there. So it's four years later, have people changed their mind about that? I don't know, I'm just asking. So I guess, I'm, this is a, this is a real issue that I'm trying to address in a practical way.
Yep.
That's all.
And I think if you just raise your hand and say, need some help, we've already got two volunteers tonight, so.
See you up there Sunday.
I'm Mark Forensic, Chairman of the Historical Commission. And I just wanted to say that, in our view, we don't want any lights on the sign at all. We don't want digitized, we would not the lights lit up. We really think there should only be the lanterns, the flagpole, and the wall memorials with any light on the common, with the exception of, say, the bandstand or the concert, so. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Just to reemphasize the point, there is no digital signs allowed on the common.
I didn't know that.
You know, so, so I just didn't know, but I think it was important to get that out the record, because that's why it's not a mandate to do this. It's, the, the issue is, is that it was a, an option for consideration. It would require a change in the bylaw to achieve that, but that's if people wanted to go in that direction.
Good evening. My name is John Mitchell Moore. I'm a member of the Foxborough Lions Club. I have Bob Turan, Dick Davis, and Bob Russell. Together, we have over a hundred and sixty years of membership in the Foxborough Lions Club. Here's a picture of two guys you may recognize in the back row. That was in nineteen ninety-four when the board approved the signs. Just a little bit of background on the signs. Before those signs were erected, when people wanted to announce an event, or a group wanted to announce what they were doing, homemade signs were hung on the, on the rails around the common. That was a mess, and talk about a distraction. That was horrible. And that was really the basis for the Lions Club to take on this project. We invested somewhere between nine and thirteen thousand. We're not quite sure what the number is, we don't have those records. In addition to that, John Barrows, who was a member of the club, did the electrical work, and there is elect, there is, there is electricity in the signs. Did the electrical work for his cost of materials. John Linek, who was a member of the club, did the excavation for the footings at no cost. So we had in-kind donations by members of the club. Also, Dick Davis's mason did the, the masonry work at a reduced cost. So we, we got a lot of work together and pulled this thing off. When, in two thousand and twelve, we were notified by, I think, Mr. Hill, that there was problems with the signs, that they were deteriorated, and was pretty obvious that there was some rust and that some of the stuff was broken. So that's when we undertook a project to see what we could do to repair it. We determined that just to repair the signs, as is, was going to cost about six thousand dollars. And at that time, it was suggested that we go to a, an electronic-type sign. Now, the electronic, so we went through the whole process of getting a vendor, and they did a demonstration of an electronic sign on the common. This was not flashing, this was not spinning, this was black and white, or, or white on black, which, there were two options, in exactly the same font as the manual signs that are put up there now. Now, anyone who had really a fair and objective point of view realized that there was almost no visual difference, other than it was, there was some backlight. But the whole concept of electronics on the common was what, what really turned people off. It had nothing to do with the sign. This whole public safety issue is really, in my view, a disingenuous fabrication. There is no public safety issue. Chief O'Leary was there. We invited him to that demonstration. And when those signs, when the thing was shown, he said right there, there's no difference and there's no, no public safety issue. If the sign and the vendor produce for us the, the standards of sizes of letters for amount of traffic, and those are national standards, and they're pretty much the same as we have in, excuse me, in our bylaw, okay? And, you know, just based on the speed and how, and I think what Linda said is, is totally accurate. When people are not reading the signs and driving by, they read it as you stop it. When people, the biggest problem on the common is people on their cell phones driving up Central Street without yielding. That's the most, I nearly got whacked yesterday the same way. So I think that we really, again, I think that the problem in two thousand thirteen, I think Jack has accurately said, was not with us. It was some very bad communication, and as you all remember, there was some really extraneous political issues that were going on. They just clouded the whole thing. So really, there was no rational discussion at the time. And that was unfortunate, because I think at that time, we could have resolved it, we could have come up with an electronic sign that would have been acceptable, and this wouldn't have come, this wouldn't have come up. But one of the elephants in the closet is that the Historical Commission, as Mark just said, really didn't want those signs there in the first place. There was a big, after the fact, they were upset because it was blocking the Foxborough sign that later got moved over to, from the old post office. But they're really, their position was, and we had a hearing with them in March of two thousand thirteen, and that was very clear, the position, is that their position was, they'd just as soon have the signs removed. So that's an underlying current that you have to factor in. And that we, we find is really unacceptable and, and really not rational, to have the signs removed because of what, what they, what they don't represent in terms of what's on the common. My name is on the Vietnam Memorial, and I'm not offended by, by the signs that they are on. So again, we would be very willing to enter into discussion. Chris, we would be willing to talk with you about organizing some volunteers. We give, this year, we're gonna give up thirteen thousand dollars to local organizations and individuals. We could get some quid pro quo, we think, or we could, you know, come up with some kind of creative way to get volunteers to, to work and get that done. But I think that that, that's something we can think about. We, we clearly don't have the authority to do that, to the four of us tonight, but it's something I think we could work on, we could work together. And I think we can make that work.
And, Mr. Chairman, just, just to clarify, I would think we would, we will have to coordinate, you know, the effort in our office. That's not, never been an issue. We've been coordinating since, since.
I understand.
So, so I don't wanna put that on Chris's shoulders, and that's, that's not fair to him, but we'll continue to work with, with whoever wants to, wants to volunteer. And, you know, if, at the end of the day, if we get people coming up to volunteer the time to do this, we're happy. And if, if people want, want the signs to stay the same way, in the end of the day, if that's the way the world is gonna continue to go on like this, it's fine. I mean, I just think if, it's, it's, it's my job to make sure that, that we're doing, continuing to do the right thing even as time goes on, because time does march on and things do go differently as, as, as they do. And, and if I don't ask the question, sometimes things go on and then, and they, they don't go and they don't happen to get, the, the right message doesn't come through.
Right.
And I think that's what I'm trying to get to.
But I, I think that, you know, the idea that the message boards are not, don't have the value that they had when we started out twenty-five years ago.
That's right.
However, they still do have value. And I think that, you know, all of the elementary schools use them. The high school actually has a digital one, the senior center has a digital one, the Hearn School has a, has a regular manual message board, I believe. And the recreation department uses one with playgrounds. So, you know, message boards are not obsolete. They, they are a part of the whole fabric of getting information out to people. I don't, I'm not on Facebook, I don't do Twitter, a lot of people don't.
You're smart.
Yeah, that's right.
Stay away.
Yeah.
But I just.
I've learned too much about my daughters that they don't wanna know.
The biggest challenge we face as a town and in any organization today is getting the word out. It's, it's a huge problem.
Sure.
Because no matter what we do, the things, words we hate to hear the most, I didn't know about that. Nobody told me. Nobody told me what was going on. I didn't know that that meeting was happening. So we're just trying to be, we're trying to be more communicative, not less. And I just don't know if that, that's the right way to do that, is in that, and by the way, there was never any interest in, on anyone's part to remove those signs from the, the actual, the Foxborough signs on the pillars from the square. The issue was whether or not we should continue on with a message board underneath that.
I understand, I understand that, but I think that, that Mark made it pretty clear that that was the Historical Commission's position, that they want them removed.
They would prefer, they would prefer that they would take them all, take them out
Well, I think, I think it was a good start of a discussion, yes.
Even, I just have to, I have to.
You have to follow the rules.
I know. No, I don't like to do that. Debbie Stewart, forty-four, Napont Heights Ave. First, I'd like to thank Mr. Arthurlett. You are one of the most honest men with incredible integrity. And you are, if there's anybody that needs to know anything about this town, all they need to do is go to you, first. Secondly, I wanna address the social media. I put it out there this afternoon. Everybody knows it's me, and I will be more than glad to provide the Sun Chronicle with what was said. I never said that there was a, that there would be a decision made on this tonight. I said there was a discussion about it, that there had been over the past several weeks. Bill, please let me finish. I don't care whether you're referring to me or not, but I'm the one that put it out there today. And everybody knows that, okay?
I didn't know that, so.
All right, well, yes, you did, because Tracy Fasil contacted you twice today.
She, she reached out to me personally, yes.
Right, she did.
Through email.
Yes, because she reached out to me, and then she got back to me and said, can you go back and find from September seventh and September thirteenth? Can you go back and find those posts? I have a list of twelve people, six who did go to Town Hall, and were told by Masha that you were no longer having volunteers doing it. Now, I put it on there before I left the house because I was so angry, because I knew you were gonna say that. Nobody stepped up. Nobody came forward. Nobody gave their names.
It's news to me.
So you're calling me a liar. I'm gonna have these people call you.
I loved, I loved, I loved to know who they were.
I put it out there tonight that everyone that said in those meetings, one post is a hundred and ten posts on it. Most of them were women with little kids from the Moms Group and said they could get two or three moms up there, one or two of them to watch the kids, and they could do the boards. Carly Nickerson put her request in two weeks prior, two weeks prior. No one contacted her and told her that her, her post would not be put up about September being DIP, I think that's what it's called, Cancer Month? That's unconscionable.
I didn't, I wasn't aware of it, I'm sorry.
She, she told me, you told, you, she spoke to you.
No, I said to, no, that's not incorrect, Deb. I mean, let's, let's make sure we get the facts right here. So what happened was that.
I'm gonna post, I'm gonna send all this to you.
So Deb, so Carly Nickerson contacted me and said, in order for her, she wanted to put ribbons around the common. The, the proper way to do that is to, is to ask for permission.
Right.
That's what she did.
Which she has been doing for the last several years.
Three, three years, three years running now.
And I was told that she has had a difficult time getting permission from that, from you every time she's asked. Then I'm gonna ask her to post it tonight.
Absolutely not, absolutely not, because, because every time she's asked, I brought it to the board, and the board's approved it. That's a fact.
Well, maybe it's the kinds of conversations that need to come before the board, before it goes to Town Hall in front of you, so that there are other people there that can collaborate, corroborate what is being said. But I'm telling you right now, one, I put it out there today that there was a board of selection meeting, that over the last month, there has been an awful lot of interest about the, the boards on either end of the common. The overwhelming response, when I went back today and looked, eighty percent, eighty percent does not want those boards to be touched. That says a lot. And I went back and looked at people's posts or, or their, how long they've been in town. There are young couples that made the comment. When they take their kids for walks, they like to go up there and they like to look at the common, they like to go up and look at the boards. And the reason they moved here was because that common said to them, this is a quaint town. That's all we've got left. That's all we've got left. But do not bring social media into it again without knowing everything. You didn't read it? Nothing was said about you. I said, the town members are presenting it tonight.
I never said there was, I never said that. I said the issue was, that the concern was that a lot of it was being said about this topic, we haven't even had the discussion yet. I guess that was my point. And, and the fact that you said it was on social media for several months, we haven't had the discussion yet publicly.
A month.
Tonight's the first.
A month.
Oh, so, so tonight's the first discussion we've had about it.
But it got brought out because.
How did it get brought out?
Carly made the post about coming up and asking you to have it done or talking to Masha, and was told, it can't happen.
I haven't spoken to Carly Nickerson directly. I have not. I talked to her on the phone once, and it was about permission to get, to use the, the common for the, for the ribbons. That was it. That was it.
So to, to move beyond all this, can we get a sign-up sheet at Town Hall?
Sure.
For people that wanna volunteer.
Happy to do it.
To work and change the signs.
I'll send it to you, all right? Because I put it out there and said to everybody, I said, I'm going up there tonight, I know what I'm gonna be facing. Please, if you went to Town Hall, or if you are willing to help put up the signs because you wanna keep them, send me a message, and I'm going to send it to you. I'm not sending it to Town Hall, I will send it to you, David.
Will you do me a favor?
What?
Email it to me.
Oh, yeah, I'll leave it.
Well, can you email it to all of us?
Yeah.
Oh, you'll all get it.
Yeah.
With, with all the respect, Mr. Chairman, not just out of order. I mean, I'm sorry, but you know, the fact, the fact of the, of the matter is that she's basically calling me a liar, and, and I, and I, and I just, I find it offensive. I mean, the, the bottom line is that I have never tried to, to divert this issue in any direction. The only reason it's here tonight is because I wanted to have the public discussion. Wanted to. I don't have a recommendation. I don't have a recommendation. I just wanna be clear about that.
Mr. Chairman, my original statement stands.
Okay, well. Thank you, Jack. I appreciate it.
I'm sorry, Jack, but I disagree with you.
That's okay, Jack. There's a lot of people out there that agree with you.
Perfectly okay.
Well, I think, I think we're going to continue this discussion at a-
Happy to.
At a future meeting. But it's based on the discussion tonight, it's clear that the Lyons, the J.C.'s, and other members are going to support the existing signage. So we'll get a sign up sheet.
And if that's the outcome of this, I'm very, I'm pleased to see the result. It's a great result.
Yep. So we'll, we'll table the discussion, we'll have it at a future meeting. We'll see how many volunteers we can get and-
One logistic is that we have a massive box with the letters in it.
Right.
And so someone would have to come during Town Hall hours to get the letters to change the sign. So the applications come in and we correspond, the volunteer goes through and pulls the letters that go with each sign. So that would have to be done during Town Hall hours. Just wanted to say that.
Yeah, so we'll just have to figure out the logistics.
It'd have to be like on a Friday or a Monday morning.
Yeah, we generally have volunteers do it Mondays or Fridays. But we're happy to work with people.
That's never been the issue.
We'll figure out a process.
Yep.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, seven forty-five at eight twenty. Randy, you're up. Board of Assessors.
Nice easy talk.
Let's talk about taxes.
Doc just said, oh, good, a nice easy topic.
It's easy, yeah.
Simple thing, right?
I think we'll, we'll get some help with the PowerPoint, but we can-
How do you feel, by the way?
Lot better. You know, the fluiness is gone. Give me a chance to work on my manuary. Glad to see that it's still a topic that brings interesting. So, first thing, first thing we should do is introduce the Board of Assessors. I'm sorry?
Yep, I'd like to make a motion that the board goes into a joint meeting with the Board of Assessment, Board of Assessors with the Board of Assessment. For his next presentation.
A second?
A second, yes.
Any discussion? Was a favor?
Great. And if the board members and the chief assessor would like to, could identify themselves to the board.
Mike Laracy, coming up on nine years on the board this year. Rob O'Donnell, about a year and a half on the board.
Tom Buckley, the chairman, I'm not going to say how long, maybe.
Hannah Laura Simons, chief assessor.
Excellent. So, so we're here to talk about the tax rate setting process, and this is really a preliminary general information session leading up to the, the actual classification hearing that the board holds annually. This year, we're targeting November fourteenth to actually set the tax rate. So it was thought that, that, you know, going over this type of information in advance of, well, in advance of that meeting would, would make for, you know, better, better share of information, you know, leading up to that. So, so the presentation is geared towards leading up to that very, that very topic of setting the tax rate. But we thought a good opportunity to actually talk about what the assessor's office does so everybody can have, have context about that. So, so we'll cover that information, and then we'll slowly glide into the actual, the tax rate setting process.
Right. So I'd like to just read the mission statement of the Board of Assessors. So the mission of the Board of Assessors is to value real and personal property efficiently, fairly, and accurately in accordance with the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. To administer motor vehicle excise exemption and abatement programs and to address concerns of members of the public quickly and courteously.
So, what do assessors do? The assessor's office is responsible for the administration of all laws and regulations regarding property tax assessment. The assessors, as required by a variety of different mass general laws and legislative acts, perform the annual appraisal of approximately six thousand five hundred nineteen parcels and accounts of property. So this includes residential property of five thousand five hundred forty-one parcels, commercial property, two hundred ninety-eight, industrial, ninety-five, and personal property accounts, which include utilities, you know, the utilities that we all rely on in town, you know, electric, gas, and telecom, five hundred and eighty-five of those accounts. So the assessors also commit about twenty thousand excise tax bills on motor vehicles each year, and they also manage the abatement and exemption programs associated with all property valuations and tax bills. So, basic question, what does my assessment represent? And the assessment we're talking about here is value. What, what does that represent? It's an estimate of market value. And the definition of market value is the price a willing buyer would pay a willing seller in an open competitive market without any undue influences, so i.e. the typical arms-length sale uninfluenced. The assessments do not predict market value. They reflect or report the market value for the assessed time period. And the time period is important to understand. People are always trying to relate their, the value that they may have gotten recently from an appraiser to sell their home to what this, to what this valuation is. And they're different, we'll explain. The real estate market can change dramatically from year to year, as we know. So the latest assessments represent the estimate of market value as of January one, twenty sixteen. And that's for fiscal year twenty seventeen, which we just completed on June thirty of twenty seventeen. And the estimate of market value for that last cycle was determined by examining sales of properties from the last, from late calendar twenty fourteen, calendar year twenty fifteen, and early calendar year twenty sixteen sales. So although the majority of properties are not for sale, mass general law still requires an assessment or an estimate of market value on every property. And sales of similar or comparable properties within the neighborhood are the best indicator of market value. Another question that gets asked commonly is, what percentage of market value are the assessed values? Again, going back to, why doesn't this seem to relate to what I'm trying to sell my home now and getting appraisal? Assessments by law represent one hundred percent of market value or fair cash value as required by the law. And the assessments for fiscal twenty seventeen, again, represent market value as of January one, twenty sixteen. Therefore, the assessments don't necessarily represent the latest or most current market value of a property. These assessments reflect values as of twelve to twenty-four months prior to taxes being assessed against said values. However, given that all property is assessed in the same way and in the same timeframe, the assessed values are relative values to all of the other properties in town. And each owner's property value as a percentage of the town's total taxable property value represents their share of the town's tax levy. So if total property value in town is two point nine billion, and that's approximately what it is, and somebody's property is worth six hundred thousand, six hundred thousand over two point nine billion, that percentage times what the levy is, and that's, that's what your, your burden is, unless, of course, you know, there's an adjustment made to the rate itself and it's split. So that's the, that's how it's arrived at. So even though the values are, you know, twelve to twenty-four months old, they're all relative. They're all being valued at the same time. So therefore, they're all relative to each other, just to try to assess a proportionate share of the burden. Do I have to let the assessors into my house? No, you do not have to allow the assessors into your home. We only request the inspection in order to be as fair and accurate as possible. However, if an assessor is denied entrance, property owners give up their ability to challenge the assessed value. It is impossible to question an assessment if a property owner refuses to allow assessors to view the entire property. In instances where the assessors do not get into the property, estimates are made about the condition of the interior of the property, the kitchen, the bath qualities, and whether there's a finished attic, basement space, et cetera. So it puts the assessors in a difficult situation to try to figure out how to characterize the property. So the interior information of a property is essential in determining the estimate of fair market value. But I will tell you, if somebody comes in and, and says, I want you to review my property, I know Hana, you know, goes right out and, you know, a scheduled appointment, you know, to do that. So always willing to, if somebody says finally, oh, yeah, I want, I want that done now. You know, that can be done.
Jenny, any question? When someone pulls a permit, does that kick anything off with you guys?
It does. Because we're looking for new growth, but it hasn't been taxed before, and what would that add to that property?
So that happens automatically? So you know when, when permits are being pulled for different things?
Yeah, we get copies from the building department, from the commission.
Direct pipeline.
Yeah, thank you.
Because that's, that's new growth, a potential new growth, which means tax, we'll get into new growth, but it's tax revenue that will be in excess of what the, the base tax would allow to be collected.
Thank you.
Question?
Yeah, sure.
Is every piece of property in town annually looked at?
Yes, well, statistically.
Yes, statistically, yes, but not physically.
How, how often physically?
Three years?
We have to, within ten years, by, by law, we have to re-measure and re-inspect all properties. And that's every town and city in the Commonwealth.
And that's measured by the, the state that review your compliance with that.
So when that happens, who actually goes out and comes to my house? One of you guys or-
It could be I, or it could be some data collectors we have.
Can we do a better job of publicizing that? When it's going to happen? Because like, I came home-
You put it on the message board.
I'll put it on the message board, yeah. I came home, yeah, I came home, I don't know, maybe six months ago, and there was like an orange sticker on my door, like, like I violated something. I came to Town Hall and I said something to the bill about it. I'm like, what the heck is this? It was, you know, we had gone out for an hour, I came home, and it looked like-
You forgot to change the message board.
Yeah, so, I mean-
It's a good, it's a good point, Chris, and I appreciate you bringing it up. So where the intensive effort happens outside of the ten-year cyclicals that are happening, we're trying to get one-tenth of all the properties every year. But when the intensive effort is happening, it's in a revaluation year. So that's when, it's just too much work that has to be done in a short period of time, so we have to contract out for people to go out and do that, for data collectors, not just for residential, but for, for commercial. And we do advertise that in the paper. I know we put it on the website, so I'm, I'm wide open to, you know, better ways to communicate that.
That's a real challenge, because a lot of people today are at home during the day, and it's difficult to even catch them.
And to come home to this big fluorescent orange, it literally looked like it was a ticket or something.
Just trying to get your attention.
Yeah.
Well, when we go out, like, for building permits, you know, we, we don't know exactly, it's going to be all over town, so it's very hard to predict where we're going to be and, you know, if it rains, if it snows, you know, what does the weather condition, you know, in general, we can't say we are out, but we're out all year long.
Yeah. But that, with that sticker too, I mean, I've been in my house twenty-two years, and I don't believe anybody's ever coming in physically inside. I've never gotten any notice like that before.
You just made the list.
You might want to compare what the change might be. But, yeah, so that's, so, you know, that's a good point. There's probably many people, I would imagine, who've never had, you know, had somebody come in because either A, they weren't aware, or maybe they got the message, they didn't pay attention.
Had I not gotten that orange sticker, I would have never known for twenty-two years that anybody was trying to come in and look at my house, because I don't believe we've ever gotten anything saying, hey, we stopped by and you weren't here.
Is there, is there a, a set period of time, whether it's, you know, in September, October of a certain year?
We do it all year long.
Do it all year long?
All year long, because, yeah, we have to look at all the sales, we have to look at all building permits, we do cyclical re-inspections, so we're out all the time, and depends on weather too, you know?
The, the heavy push for like, in the revalue years, is happening probably between January and August or September.
Well, no, January is a bad month because, you know, after snow and stuff, you know? But then if the abatement session starts, you know, we look at all the abatement applications as well.
I'm thinking of the revow, like, when the revow process really kicks in, February.
Well, we have that every year. We have, you know, we, we, we update values every year, and every year we have building permits. There is no specific time. It's spread over the whole year, because we don't have huge staff to go out there and do it all together, so.
I think to Chris's point, if, if we're going to use third-party vendors to collect this data, if there's a way to notify the public that a representative from X, Y, Z firm's going to be out collecting data on, on assessment, you know, be on the lookout for them. If there's a way to get that message out, whether it's to the website or-
Message board.
Cable, cable TV, message board.
Yeah, we certainly can.
Maybe we need to go to cable. I know we, we do alert dispatch, because people, you know, will crawl in and say, hey, is this a legitimate inspector?
So do you go to one street and go boom, 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 down each house, or?
Yeah, and cyclical, and for cyclical re-inspections, we do that. We take a whole street and do the whole street. And, and, but building permits are spread all over, sales are spread all over, so that's here and there and everywhere. But we could put, put it out on a, you know, put the board out.
I think, I'm going to guess where you're going with that, Jenny, is that, well, if you know the streets we're going to hit on cyclicals, can we, you know, get some sort of notification out?
Yeah, it'd be nice to have, have your house neat. That's what I'm thinking of.
You don't get marked up for that.
But people can set appointments. That's why we leave the sticker to, we leave the, the door hangers, so people can call us and schedule an appointment. That's the whole reason of, of, of that orange handle, hanger we have. So it says, please call us and schedule an appointment, so we can, can do the work we need to do, you know?
I appreciate you bringing that up, Chris.
Chris, you mentioned the, the Board of Assessors, we don't blow it off. That's not part of our job. I think you, if you were first out, you'd wonder.
Yeah, like, I wasn't sure who actually-
Yeah, we, we don't go on assess.
Back in the day, they did.
Yeah, the first time, I know.
Years ago.
What's that?
Years ago.
Yeah.
Years ago, yeah.
Pete, your dad.
They used to get paid too.
That's why you're not doing it anymore.
Those were the good old days, Tom.
You know, when you talk about letting the assessors into your house, when we get abatements, someone will come before the board and they'll say, you know, the property's not worth this much, whatever, over, overvalued. And we say, okay, we'll send someone in. You know, you know, when are you going to be home? Let's make an appointment. And, and they'll refuse. Well, some, you know, sometimes they will. At that point, our hands are kind of tied, because how can we make a decision as a board? You know, so we have to get in there. So if you do come before the board for an abatement, and we need to get in your house, you really have to let us. Or else we really can't, we're not going to have them. It's hard to do it.
What's the percentage of homes you actually get into? Is it high, low, medium?
It's, uh, it's, yeah, half, five.
Yeah.
They at least do a drive-by, and you do it, they'll, they'll do a general, okay?
Yeah, yeah, no, but I mean, physically get inside and say, okay, you do have two bathrooms, you do have four bedrooms.
And one of the slides we have coming up that Randy's going to talk about is everything's online. So you can go and look at your property, and you may see something that, you know, hey, my basement's not finished, but you're showing it. Well, that's a time to get in touch with the assessor.
Yeah.
And then come in and do the inspection. Well, you know, I no longer have a pool, because you're being assessed on it. It's been gone for five years. All right, well, no one ever notified us. So it's, it's important, you know, Randy will get to that slide, but to look at your property, see what you're actually being, you know, valued at, you know, appraised for, and go from there.
And it falls on the homeowner.
Yeah.
And they can't, we can't go back five years, because we've had people come in and say, I want to go, you know, I want my abatement back five years, because I have, I got rid of that pool, and we're not allowed to by law, so.
So, commercial properties and apartment valuation. So the market approach to value is one tool used by the assessors to determine valuation, and the most useful in the residential market, where there are a lot of sales. However, large apartment complexes, which is considered residential for, for tax purposes, offices and commercial buildings do not have a large market, meaning they don't turn over, that often aren't sold. So the assessors employ what's called an income approach to value to reach a fair assessment for these properties. And try not to get too technical here, but just want you to be aware that it's a different approach. It's not looking at sales. It's an income approach, which takes net operating income, divides it by a capitalization rate to provide a value. And the net income is gross potential income generated by the rental of the property plus any miscellaneous income, say, a vending machine or leasing parking spots, less the vacancy of the property, any reasonable expenses such as maintenance. So, and that, that net operating income is divided by the, the capitalization rate, which includes the tax rate, depreciation amount, interest rate, expressed as a percentage. The assessors do not use each individual's capitalization rate. They use a table that's used for similar properties within the town. It's just, it's the fair and consistent way to do it. How this net operating income information is collected is businesses provide what's called income and expense information, and they're notified by mail to send that in by a certain date. And the most important message that we can deliver on this point is that income and expense information is confidential. It is not open to public inspection. It's under lock and key. There are only four people in the town that have the authority to see that, and that's these four people here. I have no authority to look at that, and I do not look at that. So, you know, there are some people who don't want to provide that information, for whatever reason. Mass General Law, in the spirit of trying to make valuations as fair and equitable as possible so the split of the tax burden is fair and equitable, has allowed for a fine now to be levied against any entity that doesn't provide that information. And unfortunately, it's become a, you know, a revenue source, you know, for the town. But that's a personal choice that people make, and they, and they know that, because they have to pay the bill. Personal property, that's the third component of business property. You've got commercial, industrial, and then this personal property, which makes up the, the third leg of, of business property. It's tangible property, means that the, the property physically exists, it's assets, goods, material objects used in the conduct of the business, and is assessed separately from real estate. The assessment date is January one of each year. Any business that existed on that date is subject to the tax and will be built for the entire year. And this even applies to businesses that have closed or relocated after the assessment date, and that unfortunately, there's no proration as per the, the law. Who must file a personal property return? All proprietaries, partnerships, associations, trust corporations, you know, who operate in the town of Foxborough have to file a form of list declaring all the items of personal property, January one. State requirement. And that's to be filed with the Board of Assessors each year before March first. And again, there's mailings that, that go out to, to collect that, to determine fair market value. If property has no permanent location, like construction equipment, it must be listed with the assessors in the city or town where the owner is, has their legal place of residence. So the Board of Assessors uses this information on the formal list to determine taxable or- So the Board of Assessors uses this information, uh, on the formal list to determine taxable or exempt status of your personal property as well as its fair market value. And they could require to inspect it further. Again, forms of list are also confidential documents. So those are also under lock and key and there's only four people, uh, in the town here who have the authority to, to look at them, other than the, the submitter. This here excuse me, is the, um, the entry page to the town's online database of all real property. So it's on the town's website, on the assessors' page. Um, so as it was, uh, said a few moments ago, um, if anybody has any question about the characteristics that are, um, considered in determining valuation of their property, this is where you wanna go. As it will list out all of the different characteristics associated with your property. Most of them even have, have pictures and the dimensions, et cetera. Um, obviously, there's no interior photos. So, um, a- any taxpayer, I would highly encourage them to, uh, to, uh, to, to go to the database, look at this information and if they think that there's something that's in error, absolutely, they should call the assessor's office and, and ask for it to be inspected.
You're not restricted to your own property, you can have other properties as well.
Although we don't have search by name, we search by street. Here's a question that may come up. Uh, my tax bill has gone up more than two and a half percent. Doesn't Prop two and a half limit that tax increase? Proposition two and a half limits the town of Foxborough and all other Massachusetts communities by the amount of the total townwide property taxes that can be raised. Prop two and a half limits the community to raising townwide taxes in total by two and a half percent from the prior year's levy limit, which we'll define. However, new property growth can increase the levy limit. New growth consists of property tax increases caused by new construction, renovations, or land use changes, many of which will come through in the permitting process. Uh, the levy limit can also be increased by general overrides, debt exclusions, capital exclusions, and those are all ballot votes. Uh, but the town of Foxborough has never had a general override. Uh, seventy-four percent of the, of the communities in the state have those. The town does not have that. We've never done capital exclusion. Uh, we do have debt exclusions, but that's the way that the majority of the communities in the state are able to fund their large building projects with, with the debt exclusion. So Proposition two and a half does not limit any individual property tax increase or decrease. The limit only applies to the grand total for the aggregate property tax that the community raises. So depending upon relative property value changes, on a single property can change by greater or less amounts than the two and a half percent. The following slide, you know, illustrates the tax levy changes in Foxborough as a result of Prop two and a half increases, new growth and debt exclusions. So if you just go to the, the, the yellow shaded, uh, uh, number there in the FY sixteen column, and this is in millions, what you're seeing there is, um, the FY sixteen, uh, levy limit that resulted beyond fiscal seventeen, forty million, six hundred fifteen thousand. So if you go to the FY seventeen column, that's the start of, of, um, of building what the levy limit can be. Added to that is two and a half percent, in this case here, a million fifteen thousand. Added to that is new growth tax, uh, that can be, um, collected as well, so nine hundred fifty-two thousand last year. So the new levy limit for FY seventeen, which will apply to the process we'll go through in November, forty-two million, five eighty-three. But what gets added to that is, uh, in Foxborough's case, is debt exclusions, two million, five hundred eighty-five thousand. But those aren't permanent. The debt, when the debt is paid off, the debt goes away. So again, the prior year's levy limit can be raised by two and a half percent. New growth, tax, and debt exclusions are added to that, but debt exclusion's not part, part of the levy limit. There's another question that could come up. I am elderly and cannot afford this tax bill. Can't the assessors lower the assessment because I am elderly? The assessment is an estimate of market value. The selling price of a property is not related to the age of the owner. The assessment cannot be lowered or raised based on the age of the owner. The assessments are a reflection of the real estate market. Elderly owners do not sell their properties for any lower or higher prices than the market will allow. And in general, if property owners throughout the town sell their homes for less, the assessments would decrease. And in general, if they sell them for more, the assessments, you know, would increase. However, Foxborough has adopted several tax exemption programs and they're summarized on the, uh, following slide. So this is our potpourri of, um, tax exemption, uh, or deferral programs, surviving spouse and child, hardship, veterans, blind, elderly, surviving spouse or children of police or firemen killed in line of duty, tax deferral program, and the senior workout program. It's, uh, it's important to note that, um, every one of these programs, uh, has been, um, uh, the, what can be offered here has been raised to the maximum allowed, uh, by the state and that was a town meeting we would, that, that was done. Um, and all of the eligibility's, uh, thresholds for qualifying for these programs have all been, um, been, uh, changed to allow as many people as possible that can qualify. So that, all of the, the requirements have, have been relaxed to, um, the, the least, least requirements allowed, uh, by the state. So, uh, last year, there was about a hundred ninety-four thousand dollars, um, in tax exemptions. We average probably about two, two-twenty. So why the difference here? I think here's probably the, the senior work program down the bottom, for whatever reason, you know, wasn't as heavily subscribed. We're actually hoping with the changes we made at the May Town Meeting that this number, um, is, is going to increase. And, and we hope, hope, uh, that, that it will. The people, more people will be allowed in for these exemption programs.
Chairman, just, Randy, is there, is, how is that information being, um, portrayed or given out to the, to the public? Is there, is there some sort of a brochure that you have in your department about this?
Yeah, we have brochures.
Okay, that talks about all these programs?
Yes.
Okay, great.
And I, I believe you and Debbie go down to the council on aging and meet with seniors as well to discuss it.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, great, thank you.
Is any of that money, uh, reimbursable by the state?
Um, I believe we get a piece of the, um, the elderly, uh, the exemption back.
And the vets too.
And, and the vets, yeah, a piece of that, a piece of those too.
Yeah.
Just a piece?
Yeah.
For the rest of it?
Yeah, we just absorb it.
Right, but we, but we do build it into the, the budget process. It's part of this thing called the overlay, which is when we plan our budget revenues for the next year, say, we're expecting this much in taxes, less this much for, uh, for abatements and exemptions. So we always build that, you have to.
Yeah.
Always build that into the process or we always know that that's a bill that, you know, that, that we're gonna pay. What's the difference between an abatement and an exemption? An abatement is a reduction in a property valuation based on a correction to the assessed valuation. The assessed value has nothing to do with the age or income of the owner or any of the financial information about the owner, talking about residential here. Uh, the assessment represents an estimate of market value. An exemption, however, is a reduction in real estate tax due based on certain age, income, assets, or physical requirements set forth by law. The only factor that the assessors can examine on an abatement application is the market value of the property. Exemption qualifications do not factor into the assessment determination. An abatement is specific to the property, whereas an exemption is specific to the owner. And the Board of Assessors, again, welcomes any and all questions about valuations of one property in the interest of fair and equitable assessments. It's better for everybody if the assessments are as accurate as possible. So again, strongly encourage people to check out the database and see if, uh, they have a different opinion.
Randy, in, in, and I'll address this to the board. In your opinion, what is the most misunderstood metric about the assessment?
The two and a half.
Is it the two and a half or is it that it's based on market value?
Two. So the first one would be the two and a half. That's, people just can't grasp that fact that it's not their, their tax bill. Um, and the second one is, a lot of people will come in who just bought their house last year and they have that, uh, um, you know, the market value from their, their appraiser, that it's this thick and it's like, that, that does not, that doesn't count. You need it for the year prior.
Right.
And, and they have a hard time.
That twelve to twenty-four month lag.
Yeah, and they have a very hard time grasping that a- aspect too. So I think that would be our two biggest ones.
Yeah, that's a good, good point there, cuz they'll come in with abatements with comps of other, you know, homes similar to theirs, but they're basing it on the wrong years.
So.
And we gotta explain that.
In November, when you come in and you present, um, to the board and, and make your recommendation, I think those two topics would go a long way in explaining and, and presenting because we usually get, uh, quite a bit of p- number of people that come and and sit there for, I'm, I'm surprised more people aren't here tonight, uh, because I know the last time we had, we had quite a few people uh, in the audience complaining about, about their, um, assessments. And I don't think they, they clearly understood how it, how it goes about, which is one of the reasons why we wanted you guys, uh, here tonight. So I think, you know, as we go through, if we can, uh, cherry pick some of these slides to, to bring back to us, might go, might go a long way in helping people understand, uh, when we do set the rate.
Absolutely. Yeah, and this, this, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Most of that is on our website as well. You, you can all read it. It's on our website and it's all, you know.
This is on the website as well.
This presentation will. It's usually just to come here and complain about it.
That's right, yeah.
So.
We can do that too.
Yeah. No, I mean, it's, it's, it's a good idea, it's a good idea to point people to the website.
Yeah.
Cuz those people that are truly engaged will, will go and seek it out, but there's others that, oh, you know, they're, they're setting the rate. I'm gonna go down and, and see what the hell it's all about.
So, Chairman, I think it's important to note for everyone who's listening tonight that the reason we're even doing this tonight, cuz this was actually a, an outcome of the discussions that occurred during the financial summit, that more people need to understand more about the, the, the whole process that goes on here. And, you know, un- unfortunately, when people don't understand it, um, they assume a lot of things. And, and it's, it's really unfortunate because the information, there's a reason for everything that's done, everything that's done. And, uh, this is an opportunity tonight to, to sort of explain it in, in the easiest way you can possibly explain it, which is still complicated as you can see, cuz there are a lot of moving parts to this. So the fact that this information is gonna be readily available to everyone on the website is great, but unfortunately, I wish more people would be able to see it, but fortunately, it is on TV, so hopefully more people follow this.
Is it possible to put this presentation on the website?
It is on the website.
On the website?
Go to the assessors' page, Finance Department, and, and you'll find it there.
Right, good, thank you.
So an- another, uh, question that can come up is, soon I'll not be able to afford to live in Foxborough. Why are you raising my taxes every year? This is really, answering this question is trying to parse out what drives that. You know, that, 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 that question, why my taxes, uh, not, not what drives the question, but where is that, where is that happening within the process of government that it's causing taxes to rise? So the assessors do not raise or lower taxes. Um, they determine or report market value of property. That's their role in the process. The tax increase or decrease is determined by the budgetary requirements to provide town services. Rising or falling assessed values do not necessarily mean rising or falling tax bills. The increase or decrease in taxes seen by the property owner is primarily a direct result, primarily, of the increase or decrease in the budget. Individual property owners may also see an increase in their assessments due to renovations, additions, improvements that would cause an in- increase to their assessment and therefore their tax liability. Uh, there also may be some shifting of tax liability amongst the classes of property, residential, commercial, industrial, and personal, based upon overall increase or decrease in the value of each particular class. Each class has a slice of the tax burden, if you will. We're gonna get to that in just a couple more slides. And also, changes to the tax rate split between residential and business classes can also have a significant impact on taxes. So on, on the next page, I tried to sort of visually call out, in yellow, this is what will affect, um, your, your tax bill directly. And in purple, I guess that is, you know, those things do not, uh, affect, um, your tax bill. So, uh, step one, we've got, you know, the budget process starts annually in November, completes in step two at the annual town meeting where everybody raises their hand or not to, to vote to support a particular, you know, budget or level of service. Step three, which is the property valuation process, that runs in parallel from January to November. And then Department of Revenue certifies all values in a rigorous process by November. And I, I think it's fair to say that that process has only become more and more rigorous every single year. They're really on top of their game. The Bureau of Assessment. And step four is where the Board of Selectmen sets the tax rate in November by determining the split of burden between the classes of property. So that has an impact, um, on the tax bill. The collector mails tax bills reflecting certified values and voted tax rate in December. So the collector doesn't have an impact on, on the tax bill itself. I just wanted to help people to focus them in on, excuse me, the points in the process that have an impact on, on a need to increase taxes. And it's the budget process and the classification. This slide here is just to give you, um, a, a sense at a high level that, um, there are, this is what's called the tax recap and it's a high-level summary. It's a document that we submit to the Department of Revenue to get our, to get your vote of a tax rate certified. And it's many, many pages, but what it boils down to is, um, here are all the uses for the funds, so fiscal seventeen, seventy-nine point nine million. That includes operating and capital budgets. That's why you see an increase that doesn't look right to you, you know, eleven point four-three percent. But that's operating and capital. It also includes state assessments. And again, allowances for abatements, exemptions, and other deficits. So that's what it's used for at the highest level, all the funds that, that, that we're appropriating for the operating budget, goes to those three places. But then the funding actually comes from many places, um, state aid or cherry sheet, local receipts, enterprise revenue, free cash, available funds. And so that's all the non-tax revenue sources. So as you can see, to fund, in this case, a year-over-year increase of about eight point two million, about six point four million of that increase came from other sources. So what balances the equation is then the tax levy that's required in order to meet what were the voted appropriations uh, back in not just the May Town Meeting, but the other town meeting that you had in the fall, which happened after the last tax rate was set. So this is actually a combination of two, two town meetings every year, which is pretty standard for, for most communities. So, uh, so again, it's just trying to put in context where the tax levy actually fits in, uh, to funding, um, to, to funding the budget. And so, so you can see the tax levy here went up four point two, two percent, not that eleven point four-three percent because we brought in a lot of other revenues uh, to bear. Um, it looks like in this case here, mostly from enterprise and free cash. Thought it was important to briefly highlight, um, the average residential tax history, uh, for the, for the past eleven years. The residential tax increases, um, have increased an average of four point four percent over the ten years, uh, which represents about a hundred and eighty-three dollars per year, um, on average. I'm gonna come back to this slide, cuz we're almost at the end here, but I'm gonna come back to this slide to highlight the change increase in two thousand and eleven, seven point two-four percent. And then the change in two thousand and thirteen, six point oh-seven percent. Those ones are, seem out of the norm compared to all of the other increases, um, uh, that, that occurred over the last, uh, ten years. So, uh, my assessment increased twenty percent. Does that mean my taxes will increase twenty percent? No. The valuation change is not solely indicative of the tax change. There are three components that determine the tax rate, the budgetary requirements around the town, the overall value of the property within the town, and the vote of the board, um, to set the tax, tax rate at the classification hearing. So for example, if the budget increases five percent, then in general, tax increases in the town, you know, would, would increase roughly five percent, give or take, if we have other revenue sources to bring to bear, um, regardless of what happened to overall assessed values. So therefore, if the budget increased five percent and all the assessments in town went up or down twenty percent, the average tax increase would still be, generally speaking, about five percent. I'm just trying to relate the changes in assessment value to the, to the changes in taxes. So the, the tax rate is simply calculated by dividing the budget by the value of, um, of property. But the tax rate, which is calculated simply by dividing the budget by the value of property, would decrease approximately fifteen percent, the tax rate, with twenty percent rising property values, or would increase approximately twenty-five percent with twenty percent decline guys. So the tax rate itself is really just the balancer. It balances, um, the equation and, and also the burden between the classes. So now we're getting into, um, sort of the, the meat, meat of this and we're, we're, we're close to the end of this. So what I've done here is I've correlated two data points. In, um, in, in blue is the average tax bill, uh, annual, annual tax bill for a surrounding. bill, annual tax bill for surrounding communities. You know, we have fifteen surrounding communities that we typically benchmark against. And so, you know, Foxborough is, tax bill is, you know, averaged last year was sixty-two hundred dollars. And the far-right column is actually the average for this group was sixty-four hundred dollars. So Foxborough's average tax bill is three point two percent less than the surrounding community average. Sounds good. Then in red, with the line, is the average single-family value. So Foxborough's is four hundred and twelve thousand last year. The average across this group is four hundred and twenty-six thousand. And so our home values are also three point two percent less than that average. So on the surface, that sounds about right, right? Our tax bills are three point two percent less than the surrounding community average, and therefore it correlates with our values, three point two percent less than the average. But there's a big missing factor here. The town, our town, is one of six in this group that don't have general overrides. And the other ten do. And their overrides average four point four million. So you would expect our tax bill to be much lower than the average, or at least lower than the average than is represented here. So why doesn't that bear out? Now we're getting into the residential factor, which is the decision that the board makes in terms of setting the tax rate. So on this page here, I've correlated two pieces of data that are relevant to the split tax rate. In red, the bars, that's the residential value as a percent of total value across the entire town. So in Foxborough, we have seventy-four point eight-four percent last year of total taxable value is residential, the difference being business. The average across these same communities is eighty percent residential. The more residential you have, the more difficult it can be without a split tax rate to raise the revenues that you need to run the community. You really need more business taxpayers to balance it out. So then you bring in the residential factor, which is, that's the vote that the board's gonna take, hopefully on November fourteenth, for the classification hearing. That's in blue. A residential factor of one means that there's no split tax rate. So as you can see, there are six communities with their line that goes all the way up to the top, so they don't have a split tax rate. And there's a reason for that. Primarily, if you look at them, they are, they are communities that have a very high residential factor. So take a look at Sharon, for example, up over ninety-two, ninety-three percent residential. They really don't have anywhere to go to shift that burden. Same with other communities like Norfolk and Easton. Franklin's an anomaly. They have taxable property value that is fifty-five percent higher in aggregate than the town of Foxborough. So they have a very, very large taxable base. So there isn't a compelling reason, and they haven't gone a political reason, to try to ease, you know, ease the burden on residential. Contrast that with Norwood, where they have a residential factor of point seven eight. So the lower the number, the more aggressive it is, meaning the more of a shift to business. That is the most aggressive that Norwood can go. They cannot shift any more to business than the factor that they chose. They also have a pretty large taxable base, as does Canton. But Canton has chosen the second lowest out of this group, residential factor of point eight-one. So for, I'm gonna assume different reasons, probably, you know, political reasons, you know, they have made decisions historically, and these have been consistent, that they're gonna shift more to business. That's not what we are. What Foxborough has done is, when we recognized a trend where more of the value was shifting to residential than business, the board, Chief Assessors, myself, we identified when that happened. And it happened in two thousand and eleven. So we came back to the board in two thousand and twelve and said, we're seeing a shift. And the apolitical reason to adopt a split tax rate is to maintain a preferred split of the tax burden. So we came back and told the board in two thousand and twelve, we believe two thousand and ten was the benchmark year for the split of burden. And it's on the next slide, because that's when the Foxborough Lodge, all residential, had just been completed and all on the tax rolls. Patriot Place, just been completed, all on the tax rolls, that's business. And then Chestnut Green, which was a mix of commercial and residential. So that was a good benchmark year, a lot of new development in towns of our new plateau. And then in the very next year, business value dropped, which, without a split rate, we didn't have in two thousand and eleven, that resulted in that seven point something percent tax increase for residential. So that's what we noticed, and that was going to continue unless the board decided to address that shift in burden and come back to the historical split, which is what the board did in two thousand and twelve and brought it back to the same ratio. So more on that in a second. So looking at this, Foxborough has absolutely the least aggressive split amongst all of the ten towns that split. So we're at, and these are rounded, they go out for like eight decimal places. We have a split of point nine seven. Again, one would be the, would be a, you know, no split. The next one's closest to us, Walpole, point nine six. And there's, and Plainville, a point nine six. So for our residential split of roughly seventy-five, twenty-five, it's not aggressive. And, you know, clearly, the case could be made for easing out, leveling out the distribution of burden, that it wouldn't be out of line for the board to increase the split slightly, you know, to bring it back more in line, you know, with how we compare to the other communities. The tax impact of property valuation shifts. So again, in two thousand and ten, I said that was our benchmark year, seventy-two point eight percent residential. And then flash forward to two thousand and seventeen, the shift of the value is three point oh-three percent. So that, over seven years, that represents, just in fiscal seventeen, one point three-seven million in taxes from business to residential, if the board didn't split the rate. So the board did split the rate in FY twelve and FY fourteen, back to the recommended split of seventy-two point eight percent. However, the split rates voted in thirteen, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen shifted some of that burden back to residential. We moved away from the Board of Assessors' targeted split. So in FY seventeen, of the one point three-seven million that if we were gonna maintain what we had in two thousand and ten, was shifted back to business, we shifted one point one-one million, or we left two hundred and sixty thousand more on residential than we had originally targeted. And that would represent forty-foot average savings to the average taxpayer. This is a sheet that I know you're familiar with, because this is where you're actually making your decision in the classification hearing about where to set the tax rate. What this does is, this is a condensed version of a variety of options that you have. You actually have like fifty different permutations here. But what I've done is, I've shown you, if you had no split, at the top, you have a factor of one. And it shows you what the tax rates are and what the average tax bills would be for business and residential. If you go down towards the bottom, where it says, we were here in FY ten, and also in FY twelve and fourteen, the voted splits, we're back at seventy-two, two point eight. But then what's happened since then is votes have drifted back towards, you know, back towards, you know, the no split, which in essence is moving away from the recommended split. So it's definitely, there's no right or wrong answers on these things, you know, it's not like, oh, you should have been here, you should have. It's, the purpose of showing you this and the movements over time and how we compare is so you can make a better-informed, the best-informed decision that you can when it comes time to, you know, to set the tax rate. So you'll see this again, but with FY eighteen values and potential tax rates and tax bills to make your decision. So last slide, where we landed last year, we called it the equalized, the increased split. Average residential tax increase was three point two percent for most residential and three point three-four for business. That's where we landed.
You were gonna, I think, go back to slide twenty.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you. My. I got it. Okay. Sorry about that. Oops. I'm going the wrong way. I'm sorry. Almost there.
There you go.
So if you look in the second-to-last column, percentage change, so in fiscal ten, which is where the board determined that this was a good benchmark year for the town split of burden. Tax increase, the average residential taxpayer was three point oh-nine percent. Then the shift started to happen in two thousand and eleven. And there was no recommendation to do a split tax rate. So the average residential tax bill went up seven point two-four percent. So that's, looking at all the other changes year to year, that was pretty dramatic. So then in two thousand and twelve, the board recommended going back to the split that we had in two thousand and ten. So the board did split the rate, and so the increase was back down to three point six-one percent. And then in two thousand and thirteen, the vote that was taken feathered it back more towards business. So more of the burden fell to residential. And that's why you saw in that year, a six point oh-seven percent average residential tax increase. And so as you can see, since then, we've been, you know, trying to guide the board to keep us back down to a lower, single-digit increase, you know, to keep it in line with the recommended split of burden we get from the two thousand and ten benchmark year. So can't prejudge what the board's gonna do this year. We haven't seen the data yet. Evaluations are still coming in, and they still need to be certified. But.
So that, again, that year, our board had a recommendation, and the Board of Selectmen disregarded that and came up with their own split that year. And that's why you had the six, because that, what we were doing at that time, again, like Randy said, was we were trying to keep it the same as a, you know, the same for both classifications moving forward. And that was a huge increase that year. And then the following year, again, we started to throttle it back, just to, again, to keep that fairness and share the burden with all the classifications throughout the entire community.
Lot to digest, background information. We'll be back, hopefully, November fourteenth, unless there are other questions.
Well, good stuff.
Lot of information. Do they need a test on this stuff now?
We're a phone call away. Do drop in.
You know, it's important information. It really is. And, you know, it's important information for us, because we have to vote on a recommendation. We know that our vote impacts all the taxpayers in the population. We wanna be fair and, you know, we understand the burden. I mean, we're all taxpayers, too. So we understand the burden. At the same token, you know, we want our business partners to pay their fair share. We want to stay competitive. We don't want to price any business out of the community. As a matter of fact, we wanna try and attract more business in, which will actually help keep that tax burden on the residential side down. So it is a fine line, you know, to be fair. But I think, you know, looking at the surrounding communities, I think we're doing a pretty good job, all in all. It'll be incumbent upon us to maintain that.
What we're really talking about is just, you know, minor potential variations, not, you know, big quantum shifts. That's all. And we want to make sure that everybody's versed in the slight nuances of moving a little bit this way or a little bit that way.
Chairman, I just, I want to thank the board and Hannah and Randy for the work that they did on preparing this presentation. I think it was extraordinarily well done. What I hope it sends is a message to the community that this is something that's a very complex issue, that's handled very professionally, very thoughtfully, and very carefully, to try and make sure that it's being done in the fairest way possible. And I think that's really important, that people understand that, because in this day and age, it's a very complex issue to deal with. And I appreciate the work that you guys all do for that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Make a motion.
Motion to close the meeting.
Second?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. We're running really late. Selectmen's update. I just want to say that the last few weeks in this community have been the toughest that I can ever remember. Granted, I'm not a county, I've only been here since ninety-four, but I can't, I can't remember a period of time where all the, you know, the tragedy with the Skacia family and the sudden passing of Eric Dahl and Tim Head, along with the passing of Jim Finn, and of course, Alex Spear. I'm sure I'm missing.
When I was away?
Yeah, Alex Spear.
No, you said Jim Finn.
Jim Finn, yeah.
Was that, must have been the weekend.
Yeah. Jim Finn passed away. Our hearts and prayers go out to the families, those that passed, obviously. But I want to thank Foxborough Fire and Police and the first responders. You know, we're still a small town, and the people that they're trying to save are friends and neighbors. So it's gotta be tough on them. I don't think they get enough recognition for what they do, day in and day out, even with the most recent tragedies. You know, they show up the next day for work. So I, for one, am very grateful for what they do. So, and I appreciate every one of them. So I'm sure, I'm sure the board feels the same way. But this has been a tough few weeks in town, so I'm gonna give that shout-out to the men in blue and our first responders, Foxborough Fire. So, thanks, guys. Anybody have anything else?
No.
Just, and you made mention of the passing of Alex Spear.
Yep.
Longtime resident of town. Foxborough's retired for many years in Florida. But his jewelry shop was like the place to go for Christmas, for anniversaries, for everything. And he was able to, once he sold his shop, he invested in land and built apartments. And through his life's work, he gave, because of his successful life's work, he was able to give back. And he's given so much to the community. And just for Sonia, Diane, and Greg, very sorry. He was a great guy.
Yep. Yeah, like I said, our hearts and prayers go out to all the families. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I share that same belief, that this has been a very difficult time in the past few weeks. The, I just want to point out, too, that in support of what you said, that the responders who were actually, who responded to the call itself were actually present the night of the vigil. And they were actually in the, actual, on the common, paying their respects as well. So I want to say thank you to them directly, because, and I did, as if I could, reach out to them personally when I saw them. Didn't see all the fire guys, unfortunately, but I did see the police officers who were there. And I personally want to thank them for doing the work that they do, and the men and women of the department, of both departments, who do such a terrific job on a day-to-day basis. And that's why they're held in such high regard in this community. So thank you for raising that, because I couldn't agree more. I just want to apologize to the board, too, for losing my temper earlier this night, because it's not often that I do that. In fact, I can probably recall in five times, maybe on one hand, in the course of my career, that I've actually done that. But when something gets said that really is against what really, what really, what happened, it really, I take great, great offense to that, because the purpose of tonight's discussion regarding the whole discussion was strictly to get to an answer that would be useful and helpful to everyone. It was not to set a course or direct mandate to anyone to how we're gonna change things. set a course or direct mandate to anyone to, to how we're gonna change things. I wanna be clear about that, because that was not the intent. As much as that had been said and represented, that is not exactly, not, exactly not what we, what the goal was tonight. So, I apologize for everyone for losing my temper. I don't, I really don't like to do that. But unfortunately, I really took offense to what was being said, because it was not, I think, a fair representation of what actually happened. So, so thank you for that. I also wanna extend, to express to the board that I, I, with, it was with great displeasure and disappointment that I accepted the retirement, the retirement announcement of Bill Caspari today.
Ah.
Yeah. Bill has, I, I, he's one of my favorite guys working in the department, working in, in town. He's just a solid, solid individual, has been, has been a stalwart in the building department for many, many years, done a terrific job for the community. And I, and I really, I wanna say, I can't say enough good things about him as an individual. He's, he's gonna have been a, been a terrific asset to all of us. But he is gonna be retiring as of December thirty-first of this year. His time has come, and we're, we're happy for him, but we're very disappointed. We, we tried to chain him to his desk. We couldn't, couldn't be successful in doing that. But, but no, we're really, really quite happy for him in, in honesty.
You didn't, you didn't tear it up and give it back to him?
No, I, I wasn't gonna do that either, 'cause I, I know he's, he's, he spent a long time reaching this pinnacle of his career, and I wanna say it's, it's been a truly a great pleasure working for him, working with him.
That's gonna be one hard position to fill.
Yeah, it is. It is, it's a hard position to fill just on a technical basis, because there aren't a lot of building inspectors out there in, in the industry. That's in and of itself. But to get the quality of, of individual that we've had, to replace that person on staff is, is always a challenge. And so, we're gonna look for, for a combination of both. We'll do the best we can. I can, I can assure you of that. And hopefully it will be, it will be a, we'll be successful in doing that. So, just wanna share that. And that's, that's all I'm gonna say for tonight. I'm gonna, I think we've, we've heard a lot, lot tonight, so.
May I, Bill?
Yep. Just wanted to touch base with you regarding the warrant, which was supposed to, you'll be voting to close this evening, I believe. So, on your board docs is a, is a spreadsheet that represents the articles you have in front of you. We've also provided you with text of thirteen of the fifteen articles in hard copy. So...
You know, I was looking through this quickly, and the warrant article that I've been discussing with you, is it in here? 'Cause I don't see...
The issue on the marijuana?
Yeah, where is it?
It's art, it's twelve.
It's twelve. Yeah, I saw that. I looked for that as well.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. It's article twelve.
No, but this is the operation of the commercial.
This is a zoning bylaw to forbid commercial and recreational marijuana establishments in town.
No, there was another one. There was another one, yeah. So that, that's an oversight. We'll get, we'll get you that.
And that one, the language is...
That's the one that, where it allow, it, this allows people to, to, to smoke in public places, in public places.
And Chief Baker had, he gave us...
Is that part of the public nuisance one? Because that, that talks about...
No, this was, this was specific language, 'cause he sent the, what the Town of Norwood did.
Right.
This is what the towns are doing. They're being proactive.
So...
We should, we can get that.
In article thirteen, in this public nuisance, is a newly created one. If you look under public nuisance, it mentions public consumption of alcohol, controlled substances or drug-related activities.
In public places.
In public places.
No, the, the other article was specific.
More specific.
Very specific, okay.
Yeah. And Baker was very enthusiastic about it.
Okay. We sent this around, we sent this around today, and we didn't see that. So...
All right. We can, we can, we can, we'll, we'll take care of that. Because that really, yeah.
Can that be a separate?
That would be number sixteen, I think.
We'll just include it as number sixteen.
Yep.
That was always intended to do. I'd say if, if I missed that, it's my fault.
Yep.
Because I actually thought it was covered under, under thirteen.
No, it was, it was, it was a specific, single article.
Well, but thirteen is, is in, in, designed to address public nuisances, which falls into the category of that particular issue.
Yeah, but I, I think, I think, I would personally like to see a separate warrant as...
Very specific about this.
Specifically for that.
Okay.
'Cause then everyone's gonna know what they're voting on.
Okay, that's fine.
Sure.
It's our problem.
Well, you said we had this on board docs. I don't see it anywhere on board docs.
I don't see it either.
So it's...
Caitlin.
Yep, sure. So you just go into the library?
Go into the library.
I'm sorry. I'm asleep.
So you go into the library, the, the arrow, and under events, there's town meeting materials.
Hmm.
Has a spreadsheet in the, the warrant documents, but also have the warrant documents on the agenda as well.
On tonight's agenda?
Mm-hmm.
I don't see it on my agenda.
I don't see it on my agenda.
I don't see it on you.
Okay. Well, it's under, so if you go under the library...
Yeah.
If you press that little arrow next to the library, and go to events on the left-hand side, under town meeting materials.
I don't have events.
I don't have events.
If, if, it's right in the...
Oh, I see what you mean. Okay. On the right.
Yeah, on the right.
It's on the right.
Okay.
Town meeting materials, okay.
Yep. So the warrant updated ten-three. The spreadsheet is the second item. And that was an old, there's an old warrant on there as well. So the, the text here, without going through and reading them all to you, wanted to just make you aware of what the, what the text is now, as far as we can see.
Did I hit the wrong button? I don't know. Did I get that? 'Cause I hit that, and it doesn't do anything.
Click on, double-click on that.
Whatever.
Click on one of those tabs down, down the bottom.
General, Senator General.
We should open an Excel spreadsheet.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I got it.
So there are sixteen, a total of sixteen articles at this point.
With, with the one where...
Including, including that one.
Yep. So the, this draft will go to AdCom, but you'll have the opportunity to hear each article. We'll invite proponents and sponsors of each article to come in. As you can see, you're the sponsors of some of them, but it, at least three of them are, because Town Council, you know, the AG recommended, the two stormwater and the one marijuana zoning one. So even though you're the sponsors, Town Council drafted it, and will come in and speak to those. So, we will have at a, at the next meeting, as many of the people who are sponsoring or proposing the, these articles. There, my understanding is that there will be six AdCom meetings. So, we need to get, you know, people in front of you, so that you can recommend, and then we can get it to AdCom as well to discuss. We're currently in negotiations with both fire and steelworkers. We're hoping that, you know, we'll have those in the, in the next month. We'll have some resolution on those. We're very close. We continue to meet frequently. We're down to, you know, small counterproposal stuff right now. So, the text is missing for number five, the charter of school reimbursement. We have to add that in. Town Council's working on number fourteen, the hawkers and peddlers bylaw. And then we'll get you the language on sixteen as well.
Yeah, okay.
So, if you want this on the agenda with some of the, the Town Council and some of the planning items, we can get those in front of you.
So do we, do we have to close this?
No, you voted to close the warrant at one of your previous meetings on, based on tonight's meeting.
But...
So you're not on our agenda to vote?
No, no, there's not. So there's not, 'cause that's for that reason, because you already voted to do it on a previous meeting. You said the, the warrant would close on October third. So...
So it is closed?
It is closed.
Unless you said otherwise, you wanted to keep it open.
And you kept it included.
Adding sixteen?
Adding sixteen is in. That's your, that's your, it's your warrant, so you have the right to add it in.
Yeah, you were taking another look, see if there's anything else you wanna add to it. Anything you wanted to pop up?
For people from the outside, can't, can't add anything else.
Correct. Especially for a special.
Is this the first time we're seeing, like, article fifteen? I don't ever remember seeing that before.
Uh, this is the, this spreadsheet, yeah, article fifteen. I mentioned it verbally last time that this was gonna be on here. This is basically a land, it's not subject to the no net loss provision. It's, right now, we think, instead of a land swap, it's probably gonna be a land give. It's not gonna have a cost.
We may have the opportunity to get land free from the state.
Yeah. And one of the reasons for this, as a placeholder, is because Mansfield is relocating one of their stations. So, this leaves a gap in coverage, you know, even with mutual response and mutual coverage, this leaves a gap in the fire response time and coverage of Mansfield relocating.
Their new station's gonna be located down on one, was it one thirty-eight? Oh, one oh-six, rather, one oh-six. The new headquarters is gonna be located on one oh-six.
So if there's an opportunity to get a piece of land and just use it as a placeholder for now.
Well, this, this will be part and parcel to the fire master plan that...
Yes.
Right, yeah. This is not, we're not looking to do anything with that land at this point, but it's an opportunity to get the land. So we might, we, it's a good time to hold on, to get, to get it and hold on to it.
Why can't we just have it as town-owned land instead of Fox, uh, Fire Department-owned land?
Oh, it could be. It could be. It could be town. It actually goes into the town, becomes town land.
This actually is...
But it could be used for...
This reads, "to convey certain land to the Foxborough Fire Department."
Well, it would go to, it would actually can be conveyed to the town.
I think it's for use.
For use.
Probably that's...
Potential use.
But use could change.
My thing is, we're voting that, or we already voted to close a warrant, that we're just seeing stuff for the first time. It's kinda backwards to me.
But you can drop off as the weeks go on. We just can't add anything new. So we're gonna bring people before you to explain each one of these, and then you can decide if you wanna go forward or not with them.
When do we make that decision?
Um, as you hear about them from people who petition or propose or sponsor, they'll come in, you know, you can decide whether to vote to go forward with an item or not.
Yeah, and any of these articles, if it doesn't have the support of the majority of the board, there's no sense bringing it to, to AdCom.
Right.
So they should all be coming before us, before they even go to Ad?
Well, I brought that up today to talk about, and since they only have six sessions, they wanted to see at least what the draft spreadsheet was gonna be. So tomorrow night's their meeting of new members, orientation. They wanted to talk about a couple of planning articles, just to get off the ground.
Yeah, that's fine, as long as they understand that we haven't voted on this, on any of these.
And you typically don't vote on them until, towards the end of the...
And my understanding is, they're not gonna vote same night on anything either. So...
But if we, but if we're gonna drop something, then why waste AdCom's time by reviewing it after, you know, before we've dropped it?
I think, my understanding from talking to Randy, is he's, he's gonna do an orientation, and then they've asked to talk about the planning articles, some of the planning stuff.
They're not gonna deal with it tomorrow, I don't believe.
They just wanna hear it. I think mostly, it's probably like stormwater and, you know, those...
So he's got a few articles here. So you got...
Yeah, the, the planning ones are fine.
BOS, the, the fire, the fire contract, the middle managers, those things.
A lot of those things we're not gonna...
We still, we're not finalized yet. So, but the substance of chapter thirty-three B.
These are Kate can come and talk to.
Yeah, exactly.
Kate, come on, Mike.
Well, can we, can we, as board members, review these and get that to you and say, you know, I have no problem with, you know, three through nine, but, you know, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, I got, I would like to see these people come before us right away, before they go to Ad.
Yeah, we're planning to do that starting next week anyway, on all the warrant articles. So if planning or...
It's all part of the process.
I wouldn't say, then, change fifteen, 'cause on the spreadsheet, it says, the Fire Department, on this document, it says, "the Fire Department." And, and you guys just said that it would go to the town, not the Fire Department, so...
Yeah, specifically doesn't, it, it, that's, it was submitted that way, but we can, Lane can only go to the town directly.
Yeah.
I would, I would take, I would take Fire Department out of all, of all language.
Of the language, yeah.
That's fine.
I mean, it's in every single section.
And then we'll figure out what to do with it.
Exactly. Yeah, that's fine.
If anything.
We can do that.
I'll have Kate read right down.
'Cause I think that's just gonna send up a lot of red flags.
Right.
So, and we kinda did something different. We don't usually give you the written stuff till people come before you, but I thought, since we had it, why not have you look at it?
I haven't, just got it handed to me, so I haven't really read through them yet. Not ready to vote on anything.
Oh, no, nobody is.
No, we're gonna have people present the articles to you.
That's why there's no action on it.
Yeah.
And you'll be posting all the AdCom meetings in, as AdCom books, document?
Yep, each week. Yep, and I, I'll send you the agenda, the Friday or Thursday.
Yeah, okay.
Do we have a list of who new AdCom people are, or is that...
We just, we got a couple of new ones in this past week.
Tomorrow night is gonna be the introductions and the orientation, so I think we'll get the final list then.
Did anybody leave, or...
I haven't seen the final list.
Yeah, I haven't seen the final list myself.
I saw one new name that I didn't recognize.
There are two new people that I, that I saw that I've not, already recognized names.
So, we'll change this fifteen to remove the reference to the Fire Department. We'll get you the other language, and then we'll start scheduling people as part of the agenda to come in and talk about the articles. So, the actual done, drop-dead date, looking at last year, when our special town meeting was December, like, fifth or something, you signed the warrant on November fourteenth. So, it gives us a few meetings before you finalize and recommend articles and sign it. So, but as you do sign them, then we can filter them onto the AdCom.
Here it is.
How is it?
Action items.
All right. Move to approve installation of a new concrete handhold. Is that correct? Handhold. On Valley Forge Road with two three-foot PVC at pole thirty-nine between one forty-six South Street and one sixty South Street.
Second.
Motion made. Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All's in favor.
Aye.
Move to approve Town of Foxborough's updated Hawker-Peddler application.
Second.
Motion made. Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All's in favor.
Aye. Move to approve a gift donation in the amount of two hundred and fifteen dollars to the Council on Aging in memory of Nancy Williams from several anonymous donors.
Second.
Motion made. Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All's in favor.
Aye.
Move to approve a gift donation in one, of one hundred dollars to Veteran Services for the Iraq and Afghanistan War Memorial from Charlene and Amanda Champagne.
Second.
Motion made. Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All's in favor.
Aye.
Move to approve the gift donation in the amount of one hundred dollars to Veteran Services for the Iraq and Afghanistan War Memorial from Frank Morrissey.
Second.
Motion made. Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All's in favor.
Aye.
Move to approve a gift donation in the amount of one hundred dollars for the, to Veteran Services for the Iraq and Afghanistan War Memorial from Walter and Nancy Harrington.
Second.
Motion made. Second. Any further discussion?
To thank my brother-in-law.
Where was I? All those in favor?
Aye.
Move to approve a gift donation in the amount of one hundred dollars to Veteran Services for the Iraq and Afghanistan War Memorial from Laurie Boubenec.
Bencic.
Oh, Bencic, sorry.
Second.
Motion made. Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All's in favor.
Aye.
Let me skip two ahead. Hold on. Yep. Move to approve the gift donation in the amount of two hundred and fifty-five dollars to Veteran Services for the Iraq and Afghanistan War Memorial from Kiro Sircikol.
Second.
Motion made. Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All's in favor.
Aye.
Right.
Move to approve the gift donation in the amount of one thousand eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars to Veteran Services for the Iraq and Afghanistan War Memorial from the Booth Summer Camp Memorial Fundraiser. Drive.
Second.
Motion made. Second. Any further discussion?
Two things. I wanna thank the kids for, for doing that. That's pretty cool. Talking to Mike this morning, we're still about twelve-five short. So I'm not asking you to write a check. But I am asking the general public to, it's not too late to donate. I dropped my check off this morning, so all donations are willing and able and welcome.
When you say twelve-five, you mean one thousand two hundred and five?
Twelve thousand.
Oh, twelve thousand. Oh.
That's a big check.
You're lucky.
That's a big check.
If it was 12:05, I would have just told them to write a check.
125, maybe.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Move to approve the gift donation to the Historical Commission of $261 from multiple donors.
Second.
Motion made, second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Move to approve a gift donation in the amount of $610 to the Council on Aging to pay for agreed-upon programs by Friends, from the Friends of Foxborough Senior.
Second.
Motion made, second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Move to, we'll do these individually, move to approve the 3/21/17 Board of Selectmen Minutes.
Second.
Motion made, second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Move to approve the 9/14/2017 Board of Selectmen Minutes.
I was not at that meeting, so.
It was just three of us, it was you, me, and Chairman.
You have to second?
Oh, second.
Motion made, second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Those abstain?
One abstained. Move to approve the 9/19/2017 Board of Selectmen Minutes.
Yeah, I have to abstain because I wasn't here at that meeting.
Motion made, second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
One exception.
Move to approve the Orpheum Theater one-day wine and malt beverage license for the Rocky Horror Picture Show on October 6, 2017, from 8:00 PM to 11:30 PM.
Second.
Motion made, second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Move to approve for the Orpheum Theater a one-day wine and malt beverage license application for comedy night featuring J.J. Jones on October 14, 2017, from 7:00 PM to 11:30 PM.
Second.
Motion made, second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Move to approve for the Orpheum Theater a one-day wine and malt beverage license application for the Rocky Horror Picture Show and the Night of Irish-American Folk Music on 11/3/2017, from 6:00 PM to 1:00 AM.
How do those two go together?
Yeah, that's kind of a combination, interesting combination.
Are they both on the same date?
Same night.
Same night.
Really?
I'm assuming Rocky Horror is going to be the later one.
All right, I guess I'll second it.
Motion made, second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
That's it.
Motion to adjourn?
Adjourn.
Rick, you have any questions?
Just a couple, actually. You plan to accept volunteers to change the size, was that the bottom line?
Volunteers accepted, yeah.
For the time being.
What's your number, I'll put you on the list.
Thank you so much.
We'll create, we'll create a process, like a signup calendar and have some, you know, have the requests come in, have, figure out we have to do a waiver and contact information for all the volunteers.
Glad to have people volunteer for it, Rick.
Yeah, we've been, we've been really lacking in help.
It's been troubling, unfortunately, it's, I'm not going to go there.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you.